Starting, all attendees are in listen-only mode.
All right, and now call this meeting the City Council order. Please note that pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12th, 2020 orders suspended certain provisions of the open meeting law and the Governor's March 15th, 2020 order imposing strict limitations on the number of people that may gather in one place, as well as Mayor Carter Tony's declaration of emergency dated March 15th, 2020, this meeting of the City Council will be conducted via remote participation. We'll post an audio recording, audio video recording, transcript, or other comprehensive record of these proceedings as soon as possible after the meeting on the City of Somerville website and local cable access government channels. Now please rise for a prayer and pledge allegiance.
Mr. President, let's begin this meeting with a prayer. God grant this City Council the serenity to accept the things that cannot be changed, the courage to change the things that can be changed, and the wisdom to know the difference. And now let's join in a salute to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please be seated. And Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
This is roll call, Councilor Edogang.
Here.
Counselor White.
Yeah.
Counselor Ballantyne. Counselor Ballantyne. I don't record Counselor Ballantyne's presence, Counselor Ewan Campan.
Here.
Counselor Davis.
Here.
Counselor Strezzo.
Present.
Counselor Klingon.
Present.
Counselor Mbah.
Present.
Counselor Scott.
Present.
Counselor Rosetti.
Present.
And Counselor McGlaughlin.
Yeah.
Mr. President, we have ten counselors present, one is absent, we have a quorum.
Do we have any moments of silence? Counselor White.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is sort of a personal one for me. This is a memory of Tony Anthony Coder. Many folks are probably familiar with the old Coder Funeral Power that was on Washington Street, and it was demolished along with the old Pope School, which was the Boys and Girls Club, and then there's the Somerville Community Court housing development that's there. The Coder family came probably to the area of Rossmore Street, Mansfield Street, Washington Street, some of the last back in the very early 1900s. And Tony's father, Tony Coder also got a funeral parlor, I think in the 40s, and actually he was an elections commissioner. And then his son, Tony Randy, a funeral home for many years. Back then, when I was growing up, right in that neighborhood on Rossmore Street, that's when we were a very dense community, and that was largely an Italian-American neighborhood. And wakes and funerals are actually a big part of the culture. When folks were late, it would be a two-day affair, and out of respect, everyone in the neighborhood would go, so they were, you know, sometimes went the event. And anyway, the funeral homeowner, the director, would be well-known in the community, and Tony was really, he was a funny guy, and he helped folks in the community, was involved in charities. I knew him from his involvement in Alliance Club and raising money. And, you know, my parents were buried through the funeral parlor, my uncle and aunt, and a lot of my friends' parents and folks that I knew in the neighborhood for many years. And it was funny, a bunch of us from the neighborhood were forming a amateur hockey team in the league after, while we were in college. So I went to Tony to see if he would sponsor it. So it's kind of unusual for Funeral Power to sponsor an athletic club. So anyway, we took the name Coder Club, and, you know, we played at places, people, oh, you're from Somerville, is it a bar, the Coder Bar, we're not familiar with it? And we'd have to say, well, no, it's actually a funeral parlor, and you get some sniffers. And every once in a while, a wise aleck would say, well, gee, from a funeral parlor sponsoring you, that's why you play like a bunch of skiffs, I guess. But anyway, it was sort of a joke, and I know Tony would appreciate it, and, you know, I wish that he rests in peace and that we, you know, keep his memory in mind for his contributions and also for the family's contributions to our community.
Thank you. Please let the record show that Counselor Ballantyne is present. Counselor Scott. You there, Counselor Scott? Oh, he'd like to sign on, I apologize. Any further moments of silence? If there's no further moments.
Signing on, President.
Counselor Mbah would like to sign on as well. If there's no further moments of silence, I'd like to take a moment to recognize Paul Shokir of Glen Street. It's very sad to hear that he passed away right before Memorial Day. Paul was a veteran of the Vietnam War, served in the Air Force, and later went on to serve in the Federal Protective Service and Department of Homeland Security. He was a really good guy. He passed away at the age of 66. When he was in Vietnam, he contracted Agent Orange, and I know that he had health complications, which unfortunately resulted in his early passing. I met Paul when I was first campaigning, and even though I knew that he did not agree with all of my views, he always treated me with respect, was always a friendly guy. Him and his wife were always very open to having good conversations with me regardless of the subject. I was a very proud American, very proud patriot of this country. His house that he kept immaculately, maintained it very immaculately, has a flagpole up there with a POW flag as well as an American flag. So I'm very sorry to hear of his passing, especially right before Memorial Day. I learned after Memorial Day of his passing, and my thoughts and prayers are with him and his wife and his family. Seeing no further moments of silence, please rise for a moment of silence. Please be seated. Mr. Clerk, please read the next item.
Mr. President, item number three is the approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of May 13th.
All right, this item is laid on the table for approval, and before we get any further, there are a few items that I'd like to take out of order after the public hearings and citations. Counselor Rosetti would like to take items 59 to 67 out of order. These are confirmations of firefighters. And then there was a request from the city for a late item to allow our racial social justice director, Denise Capers, to speak. I would like to take that item up after that. Are there any other items that counselors would like to take out of order? Seeing none, please read the next item.
Very good. Item number four is a citation submitted by Counselor Strezzo and the mayor commending Kenya Alfaro after five years of outstanding service to immigrant families as the Welcome Project's Director of Parental Engagement and Education Policy.
I will definitely like to sign on to this, and Counselor Strezzo, you have the floor. And Counselor Ballantyne would like to sign on.
Thank you, Mr. President. I am honored, absolutely honored to do this citation and to really have Kenya Alfaro just recognized by the City of Somerville for her devotion, her steadfast work, and would love to sponsor her to speak. And if anyone else would like to speak on her behalf, I'd like to sponsor as well. But as far as I understand, it's just Kenya would like to speak, so with your permission, Mr. President.
Counselor Strezzo would like to sponsor speaker, seeing no objections. Kenya, I see you there, I'm going to unmute you on my side, and you're unmuted, Kenya. You might have to unmute on your side, so there you go.
Great, thank you, everyone. Thank you, City Council Strezzo, and everyone else on City Council. I am truly honored for this recognition of the work, which I don't consider work really and just a part of the, kind of natural part of life. I want to thank folks and staff and board at the Welcome Project to open this space for me to be bold and creative in the way that we serve immigrant families, and to folks in the city from the Somerville Public Schools and across the City of Somerville who have worked alongside of me and really fought alongside as well. I, of course, want to thank the immigrant families that I've been working with who have day in and day out really shown me what it means to be resilient, but also what it means to remain joyful when times get really difficult. As the daughter of two Salvadoran immigrants, I know the stressors that go into daily life for immigrant families, and they so openly welcome me into their homes and their lives, and I couldn't be more thankful. I will miss Somerville, and I will miss the memories and the work that we've done here. But I will continue to fight the good fight, and I hope that everyone here does the same in fighting for immigrant rights as well. So thank you, everyone.
All right, I think the entire Council would like to sign on, if I haven't said that already. Does any counselors have any comments? Here and none, I have plenty to say, so I'll give other people a chance. Yeah, Counselor Klingon? Counselor Klingon?
Yes, sorry for the delay, Mr. President. I just want to thank you, Kenya, from all of us, you know, all of my constituents here in Wood 4, and you've held a special place here at the Welcome Project in the Mystic Activity Center, serving hundreds and hundreds, by thousands of folks. And I wish you the best of luck in whatever it is you go off and do, and I want to just thank you again, and I really appreciate your work. Take care.
Counselor Mbah?
Thank you, Mr. President. Along the same, then, I just want to thank you, Kenya, for all your work for the city, especially your work with Just Somerville, leading to the first rally that, you know, we had last year. I just want to say that may you, you know, continue to do great things and continue to be awesome, you know, and fight for a just and equitable society. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further comments? Seeing none, I have a very personal thank you for Kenya. One, thank you for all the work, service you provided this community, but thank you for the very specific service you provided me, that's been a life-changing service. People may not be aware that Kenya was my Spanish tutor for college. I hired her to help me pass my final Spanish class at Tufts University that I had struggled with for many years as someone with a Boston accent who was uncomfortable learning the new language. It was a very difficult class for me to take, and Kenya guided me through that entire process. And as a result, I am the first person in my family to have graduated and have a college degree, and I think I couldn't have done it without Kenya. I mean that literally, that I could not have done it without your support, and I really appreciate that, and I hope we stay in touch. But if we don't, I just have, Kenya, help me write a script for talking to my constituents so that I can speak to Spanish-language constituents. So I'm going to give it one last shot and see if I get an A or a B, which is what I got in Spanish class, which was more than I could have hoped for. Me llamo Matt McGlaughlin, yo soy tu representivo de un consejo municipal de East Somerville. Estoy para ayudarle con problemas pequeños como el trafico, los ratones, y los baches. Pero también trabajo con cosas más grandes como este derechos de inmigración, vivienda, accessible housing. Aquí hasta un flyer con mi número y teléfono y email, por si... Go on and on. Gracias por su tiempo claro, and muchas gracias, Kenya, and don't be a stranger. Any further comment? All right, this item is laid on the table for approval.
Mr. President, item number five is a public hearing on a grand location application submitted by RCN to install seven feet of conduit in the intersection of Somerville Avenue and Adelaide Road from a utility pole to an existing RCN conduit.
All right, and now that this is public hearing open, is there anyone in the audience who wishes to speak on this item? Please use the hand emoji icon, and I will call upon you. And I see Paul Demerden. Paul, I have you unmuted.
Good, how are you?
Doing all right, how's it going?
Good, thanks. I was just, I'm wondering if the work will go on to Adelaide Road or if it will stay on Somerville Ave?
That's a good question. Is there anyone in the audience who is here to answer that question? Please use the hand icon. Bill Conway. Bill, you're unmuted. You're unmuted on my side, Bill, you might have to unmute yourself.
I apologize. The work will just be right on the, on Somerville Ave, it will not go down Adelaide Road.
All right, Bill, can you unmute yourself as well?
Sure. Bill Conway, representing RCN.
Okay. Let's see, Paul, did you have any further questions?
No, since it will stay on Somerville Ave, then that's fine. It will not even go on to the sidewalk?
It will be right, there's maybe a foot on the sidewalk, but it's not going to be on the Adelaide roadside. It's basically going to be from the pole towards Somerville Ave. It'll be like one foot.
Okay, I think the sidewalk is cemented, so you will re-cement the sidewalk for the portion that you disturbed?
Correct.
Right. Okay, thank you very much.
All right, thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience who wishes to speak on this item? Please use the hand icon. All right, seeing no further comment, I declare this public hearing closed. Any comments from the council? Seeing none, this item is laid on the table for approval. Next item.
Item number six is a public hearing, a grand location application submitted by Crown Castle to install 15 feet of conduit in Somerville Avenue from a manhole near the intersection of Somerville Avenue and Kilby Street to a point to pickup at 366 Somerville Ave.
And I now declare this public hearing open. Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to speak on this item? Please use the hand icon. I don't see anyone raising their hand. There's a little hand icon there for you to press. Go once, go in twice. All right, I don't see anyone. I declare this public hearing closed. Any comments from the council?
Yes, Mr. President.
Counselor Scott?
Yeah, I've looked over these plans. They do go, it looks like they go right through an ADA, you know, an ADA ramp onto the sidewalk. It's a fairly dense section, especially with the farmer's market being there on the weekends now. So I would just have some questions for Crown Castle about this, but it doesn't look like they're in attendance this evening to answer any questions.
Yeah, I'll give Crown Castle one more chance. Is there a representative from Crown Castle in the meeting? Please use the hand icon so we can recognize you. Bill, are you representing Crown Castle as well?
Yes, I am.
Okay, there we go.
Yes.
Bill, can you, well, I reopen the public hearing, and Bill, you have the floor.
Yes, we're going, you know, unfortunately, it's going to go right across the sidewalk. You know, we will not disturb the ADA ramp. It will obstruct, you know, the sidewalk for pedestrians. You know, we can divert and, you know, do whatever hours you would prefer the work to be done, maintain that we have a safe work zone as well.
Okay, so is the plan to hit that manhole cover that is partially shielded by a metal grate on the sidewalk there?
Yes, it is.
Okay, I would just, I would just ask that we make sure that we get that work done during the week and not have any of that work happening on the weekend or have any laydown, because again, we have our main farmer's market in there on the weekends, and they use all the real estate, especially that piece right there is part of the traveling, the only way for cars, emergency vehicles to get through.
Absolutely, we will work with Department of Public Works and do whatever you want to have this done in a safe and timely manner.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, any further comments? Here and none, this item is laid on the table for approval. Next item.
Item number seven is a public hearing and a grand location application submitted by Comcast to install 10 feet of conduit in Washington Street from an existing utility pole at the intersection of Washington and Franklin Streets to a point to pickup at 103 Washington Street.
And now declare this public hearing open. Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to speak on this item? Please use the hand icon. Bill, again? Are you speaking on this one too, Bill?
I'm sorry, I'm not speaking on this.
Okay, all right, I saw your hand. Is there anyone from RCN or anyone from the public who wishes to speak on this item? So Robert Rugman. Robert, you're unmuted.
So I'm the utility coordinator for Comcast, and I can answer any questions that anybody has on this item.
Okay. Is there anyone else in the audience who wishes to speak on this item? Please use the hand icon. Seeing no comments from the public, I declare this public hearing closed. Are there any questions from the council? Here and none, this item is laid on the table for approval. Next item.
Item number eight is a public hearing, a grand location application submitted by Verizon to install 30 feet of conduit in Pearl Street from a manhole to an existing handhole near the intersection of Pearl and Pinney Streets.
And now declare this public hearing open. Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to speak on this item? Please use the hand icon. Is there a representative from Verizon? Robert, are you speaking on this one, or is your hand up from before?
Sorry, my hand was up from before.
Anyone from Verizon or anyone from the public who wishes to speak on this? Please use the hand icon. Going once, going twice. All right, I declare this public hearing closed. Are there any questions from the council? Seeing none, this item is laid on the table for approval. Next item.
Item number 10 is a public hearing, a grand location application submitted by EverSource to install 1,200 feet of conduit along Mystic Avenue from Medford to Boston as part of the Woburn Transmission Line project.
Before I go to the public hearing, Counselor Scott?
Mr. President, did we skip item number nine?
I think we did, yes. Did you read out item nine, Mr. Clerk?
No, I did not, Mr. President, I apologize for that. Item, let's go to item nine, which is a public hearing, a grand location application submitted by Verizon to install a utility pole near the intersection of Houghton and Prospect Streets.
All right, and now declare this public hearing open. Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to speak on this item? Please use the hand icon. Robert, is that you again, or you just keep raising your hand? I can't tell.
I didn't raise my hand.
Okay, I just keep seeing the hand icon bob up. Is there any comment from the council? Any representatives from Verizon or the public? Here and none, I declare this public hearing closed. On the item, Counselor Scott.
Thank you, Mr. President. In the absence of any input from Verizon on this, answer's absolutely not. Just based on the closest residents there, Lisa White, Mary Marara, all of Houghton Street, just having reviewed the plans, this is utterly incomprehensible. So, you know, I'd be happy to have Verizon reach out and get in touch with me and understand what the goal is here and why they would be placing a pole there. It makes utterly no sense to me, so I would not, I would request this not be approved.
All right, on the item, Counselor White.
Thank you, Mr. President. I agree with Counselor Scott. Actually, I'm concerned, I believe the one right before it was also from Verizon, and they did not elect to have somebody appear before us on a public hearing for two of their items. So I guess my inclination would be to ask for both of these items to basically remain on the table until our next meeting, and then have, make sure a representative from Verizon comes to speak to both of them. And I would hope also explain to us why they submitted something, and they don't have a representative here and didn't at least contact the city clerk to notify the city clerk, because I think it's important for the utilities to know that if they're scheduled for a public hearing, that they have somebody here, because you may have folks at home, maybe they don't want to speak, but they're also interested in it, and it's sort of like a needless complication. So, again, I agree with Counselor Scott. I'd ask that both of those items be kept on the table for our next regular meeting.
All right, any further discussion? Seeing none, items eight and nine will be laid on the table with no vote taken.
Very good. Now we move to item number 10, which is a public hearing, a grand location application submitted by EverSource to install 1,200 feet of conduit along Mystic Ave from Medford to Charlestown as part of the Woburn Transmission Line project.
All right, and now declare this public hearing open. Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to speak on this? Please use the hand icon. Let's see, I got Rob Collins. Rob?
Yes, sir, Mr. President, I am the project manager for EverSource for this project, so if there's any questions regarding it, I'll be happy to answer it. I also have a very brief presentation, if you want, of the overall project and the reason for the request.
Okay, Rob, where's Jackie Duffy?
I don't know the answer to that question.
We only listen to Jackie Duffy around here. So, anyone in the audience who wishes to speak on this item? Please use the hand icon. All right, seeing no further comments, I declare this public hearing closed. Any questions from the council? Counselor Rosetti?
Thank you, Mr. President. Through you to the representative of EverSource. Is this not the very enormous project that the city developed a special compact with EverSource over a few, last year or a couple of years back? Isn't this a large-size project and it's ongoing, or am I mixing this up?
No, this is a large-size project. This project goes from a substation in Woburn to the substation on the Mystic River in Everett.
Okay, sir, so to my memory, a few years back, the city worked out a multiple-page compact with EverSource and agreements for the work conditions of this project. So why then is this request before us? Is this something new that's transpired since the initial agreement?
Yes, our original design had us running in the sidewalk between Middle Six Ave and Home Depot, down through Home Depot, and it turns out the sidewalk is private property, it's not city property. So we have to push our alignment out into the street. We attempted to get an easement from the private property owners, they were not interested in granting us an easement, so we're blocked. So we have to go out and move the alignment out into the street.
Okay, thank you for that clarification. I'm going to yield to my colleague, whose ward this sits in, it's a very, it's, this particular area of our city is under close scrutiny right now, so I'm going to yield to my colleague and let him continue in the questioning. Thank you, Mr. President.
Okay, before we go to you, Counselor Klingon, I see Counselor White would like to speak. Would you mind letting him speak first? He might have some insight on this.
That's fine.
Thank you, Mr. President. Yeah, when I saw this on the agenda, I immediately contacted Rich Raich. So yes, Counselor Rosetti is correct, it was a community host agreement and a compact, and as the gentleman from EverSource said, a change is necessitated. Mr. Raich has reviewed everything, and engineering has no problem with it. In fact, I think because it's not, you know, it's not going on the sidewalk, the view is effectively in a better place, at least, you know, from what Mr. Raich said to me. So that's sort of the input that I've gotten, so, you know, I'd yield now, of course, to the ward council, if, you know, if he has any questions, certainly.
All right, Counselor Klingon?
Thank you, actually, Mr. President, I think it's both mine and your words. My, so it sounds like this is an old project, but there's been some adjustments to it. But I think in the meantime, there's been some projects presented from Mast dot that I'm just not sure how this will come, like, this may be done long before they start diverting, you know, traffic off of the exit there. Could you just explain a little bit the scope of the work in terms of, you know, it says Medford to Boston, you know, Charlestown, whatever. So where exactly are you going to start on the Somerville portion? Like, in this particular? Like, in this particular instance?
Sure.
You already done some work in Somerville and then?
Yes, we have. If you want to drop down, go down a couple of pages. The scope of work in Somerville is about seventy-four hundred feet from the Medford line down to the Mastod jurisdiction underneath, at Lombardi Street. We have completed approximately five thousand feet of that seventy-four hundred feet. We are, go down one more page, please. Keep going, I'm sorry.
See, I think I remember you out by Shore Drive. So, you've already, you're past Shore Drive at this point?
Oh, yes, yes. We are, we've gone underneath I-93 and we're just, we're north, we are close to the self-storage area.
Oh, well, that's you, Matt. No, but I just want to double check, because, yeah, it was confusing to me as the ward council now, before this agreement had been worked out. So, okay, well, it sounds like you're, you may be done well beyond before this, the Mastod project.
Yes, yes. If you want to keep scrolling down.
I'm all set, Mr. Chair, and Mr. President. Thank you.
Okay, Councilor Strezko?
I don't have anything to say. Thank you.
Okay.
If you look at the print in front of you, the dotted line is where the original alignment was and what we currently have a grant of location for. The gray line out in the middle of the street is where we want to move to.
Okay. And what are the hours of construction here and how will this affect traffic in that area?
As far as traffic goes, we'll have, we've got traffic management plans that have been developed and reviewed by the city. We will obviously have to shut down a lane or two to work in this area. The hours, we're hoping, will be seven to four. The longer hours we have, the quicker we're going to get out of the area.
Lot of work being done on this street. Alright, any further comments from the council? If there's no further questions, we can move to approve. But if people had more questions or any doubts, we can refer to committee.
I'd rather move to approve, Mr. President. The sooner they get this done and get off our sidewalk streets, the better.
Council Clay moves to approve. Any discussion? Seeing none, this item is laid on the table for approval. Next item.
Item number twelve, I'm sorry, item number eleven is a public hearing in a Grand Location Application submitted by EverSource to install thirty-six feet of conduit in Sycamore Street from a utility pole to a point to pickup at Eight Sycamore Street.
Alright, and now to clear this public hearing open, is there anyone in the audience who wishes to speak on this item? Rob?
I'm sorry, I meant to take my hand down. I'm not involved in that project.
So, this is an EverSource one, right? So, you're not involved in this?
No, I am the project manager for just the transmission line project.
Okay, looks like we got Joanne Calendar and Liz Toner here. Joanne, you're unmuted.
Hi, my name is Joanne Calendar. I'm here representing EverSource. I'm taking Jackie's place for the night. Her son is graduating from high school, so we gave her a pass.
Oh, excellent.
So, as relates to this Grand Location, as was mentioned, we are seeking one to install thirty-six feet of conduit into Sycamore Street. And this work is necessary to provide underground electric service to Eight Sycamore Street.
Okay, very good. Is there anyone else in the audience who wishes to speak on this? Please use the hand icon. Liz, did you want to talk still? I saw your hand went down. Please raise your hand icon if anybody wants to speak. Alright, seeing no further comments, now to clear this public hearing closed. Any questions from the council? Hearing none, this item is laid on the table for approval.
Item number twelve is a public hearing in a Grand Location Application submitted by EverSource to install thirty-four feet of conduit in Hawthorne Street from a utility pole to a point to pickup at Twenty-Six Hawthorne Street.
Alright, and now to clear this public hearing open, is there anyone in the audience who wishes to speak on this item? Joanne?
Yes, hi. I'll be speaking on this one and the next one as well. But again, we are seeking a Grand Location for approximately thirty-four feet of conduit in Hawthorne Street. And this is necessary to provide electric service to Twenty-Six Hawthorne Street.
Alright, is there anyone else in the audience who wishes to speak on this item? Please use the hand icon. Alright, seeing no comment, I declare this public hearing closed. Any questions from the council?
Mr. President?
Council Davis?
Thank you. Through you, can I just ask what the, when you expect the work hours to be on this one?
Typically, eight to five.
Eight to five, okay. You say typically, I asked just because I know that the folks over there in this area, it's like, it's a small, dense area and there's been one project after another and they've been a bit bombarded over the past several years. So, if we could have this be, that eight to five be a contingency on the approval, if that's possible, Mr. Clerk, I think that would be perfectly fair.
Through the chair, certainly. You would wish to set a condition, hours no, only within the bounds of eight AM to five PM?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Clerk.
Alright, do we need to vote on that or can we just have that stated?
That should be voted on as a condition.
Okay, Councilor Davis moves to set these conditions. Any discussion? Hearing none, let's do a roll call on that vote.
On setting hours within the parameters of eight AM to five PM for Agenda Item Number Twelve, Counselor Niedergang?
Yes.
Counselor White?
Yes.
Counselor Ballantyne?
Yes.
Counselor Ewan Kempin?
Yes.
Counselor Davis?
Yes.
Counselor Strezko?
Yes.
Counselor Klingon?
Yes.
Counselor Mbah?
Yes.
Counselor Scott?
Yes.
Counselor Rosetti?
Yes.
And Counselor McLaughlin?
Yes.
Mr. President, all eleven councils have voted in favor. Those conditions have been placed on that item. That item can now be laid on the table as conditioned for approval.
Any further discussion on this item? Hearing none, this item is laid on the table for approval.
Very good. We move then to item number thirteen, which is a public hearing in a Grand Location Application submitted by EverSource to install forty-seven feet of conduit on Highland Avenue from a manhole to a point to pickup at One Thirty-Six Highland Ave.
Alright, and now to clear this public hearing open, is there anyone in the audience who wishes to speak on this item? Joanne?
Yes. So, again, as the clerk had mentioned, we are seeking a Grand Location for forty-seven feet of conduit in Highland Ave. And this is to provide supply power to One Thirty-Six and One Thirty-Eight Highland Avenue.
Alright, is there anyone else in the audience who wishes to speak on this item? Please use the hand icon. Once, going twice. Seeing no further comment, I leave, declare this public hearing closed. Any comments from the council? Hearing none, this item is laid on the table for approval.
Very good. We move then to item number fifty-nine, which is a request of the mayor, requesting confirmation of the appointment of Connor Colbert to the position of firefighter.
Okay, Mr. Clerk, can you read all the other items as well? I figured we'd get them all done.
Very good. We have a number of them, fifty-nine through sixty-seven, are requesting the confirmation of the appointment of Connor Colbert to the position of firefighter, as well as Daniel Higgins, Jason Kenny, Brittany Taylor, Nicholas Halloran, Sean Markey, Daniel O'Donnell, Jeffrey Carusio, and Matthew Sullivan.
Alright, Councilor Rosetti?
Mr. President, thank you. These names should sound familiar to you, my colleagues, and to the community, given that we, the Committee of Confirmation of Appointments and Personal Matters, recently interviewed all nine of these individuals and approved them to go unanimously to the reserve list. Since that time, the necessary other paperwork has been completed. The chief had contacted me and is now requesting that we approve them to the position of firefighter. They will be attending camp early fall, I believe, and won't be actually put on the payroll until the completion of that camp. Assistant Chief Major is here if anybody has any questions. But I, at this time, move to approve all nine of these individuals for confirmation here this evening.
Councilor Rosetti moves to approve the nine firefighter positions. Any discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll on approval.
This is on approval of the firefighter appointments just described in items fifty-nine through sixty-seven. On approval, Counselor Niedergang?
Yes.
Counselor White?
Yes.
Counselor Ballantyne?
Yes.
Counselor Ewan Kempin?
Yes.
Counselor Davis?
Yes.
Counselor Strezko?
Yes.
Counselor Klingon? Counselor Klingon? I don't record a vote for Counselor Klingon. Counselor Mbah?
Yes, sorry about that, yes.
Alright, Counselor Klingon votes in the affirmative. Counselor Mbah?
Yes, please.
Counselor Scott?
Yes.
Counselor Rosetti?
Yes.
And Counselor McLaughlin?
Yes.
Mr. President, all eleven councils have voted in favor. Those appointments have been confirmed.
Alright, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. President, and to my colleagues. And through you to Chief Major, Assistant Chief Major, if you could please extend the council's congratulations to all nine. Normally, we have them come before us with the pinning, because we're in the virtual world still with our meetings. We're not able to do that. So, we wish to congratulate each of these men and women, if you could, on our behalf. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Alright, next item.
Mr. President, the next item is a late item that has just very recently been submitted, submitted by the Director of Racial and Social Justice, Denise Melina Capers, who is submitting a letter to the City Council with respect to the fiscal twenty-two budget.
Alright, so I got this request, late item for Ms. Melina Capers to appear before us. This is a communication, so if someone will sponsor her to speak, I'm more than happy to have her speak. And if councilors feel compelled to say something, I will recognize you. However, keep in mind, this is a communication, this is not a vote. It's not a discussion about the Finance Committee. It is just a request of communication. So, I'd rather not have a long back and forth about this. Councilor Rosetti, or Councilor Ballantyne would like to sponsor Denise to speak. Seeing no objections. Denise, are you there? There you are. You have the floor.
Good evening, Chair. One moment, please. To the honorable members of the City Council. On Monday, June seventh, I presented to the members of the Finance Committee the proposed inaugural budget needed to establish the city's first racial and social justice office, whose mission will be to work to dismantle all forms of systemic racism and injustice facing any and all members of our community. I would like to thank the members of the public that came forward to express their concerns, primarily over insufficient resources for three social justice-related commissions. The Somerville Commission for Persons with Disability, Disabilities, the Human Rights Commission, and the Somerville Commission for Women. I hear the frustrations voiced by the sponsored residents, and please know that this letter is not intended to minimize or dismiss them. As I said on Monday, the RSJ Office proposal is a start, but it is not the end. I know big challenges are ahead, and I look forward to engaging in the work with each of these commissions and my future staff, and seeking continued investment wherever that work leads us. Each step we take will matter, including this proposal. For this reason, I have to address the way my budget presentation was handled in the Finance Committee meeting on Monday and the impact that hearing could have on the future of the RSJ Office. I am saddened by the way the commissioners' concerns were handled and that the approach to this important discussion did not embrace a core element of equity and inclusion, building public trust. One of the key concerns voiced on Monday was that the commissions have not had the resources and attention to meet the needs of the community. The RSJ Office proposal takes steps to address this need in three ways. First, it establishes two full-time positions on more than doubling of current resources to serve three social justice-related commissions. Second, it provides the commissions the resources of the full RSJ Office, including a staff of nine. And third, the office plan is dedicated to grassroots collaboration with all community partners, including these commissions. The proposed expansion of investments in these commissions aims to begin to address a longstanding imbalance. But instead, it was the hearing that became imbalanced. There was a last-minute notice of sponsored public testimonials, which, to my knowledge, has never happened during a budget hearing. To maintain equitable access to a public forum, residents have historically been directed to share their input about the proposed budget at the public hearing, the night designated for hearing community feedback from any member of the public. Why did the committee break from this commitment to be equitable and fair? Why did this deviation from a longstanding budget hearing fairness practice first manifest here in this particular moment during the first-ever budget hearing for the Racial and Social Justice Office? Why were some given plans and exclusive access when others were not? The honorable members of the City Council have these important questions to consider. They must also consider the undercurrents of racism and bias that were evident in the conversation and the shared narrative of some of the sponsored constituents and the Finance Committee members. The hearing was almost entirely consumed by a hostile dissection and critique of one aspect of the RSJ Office proposal. This form of distraction, when you narrow the focus to one point of contention and use that conflict to foster animosity, is a tactic used to divide and to maintain existing power dynamics. A motion from the councilors to add resources, which is a standard practice during the budget process, would have addressed the concerns raised. Instead, these tactics served to diminish the credibility of the office before it even launched. A repeated narrative within the conversation suggested that the important work of these commissions should be distinct from an office that focuses on racial justice. And comments further suggested that the RSJ Office should stay in its racial lane, creating an us-versus-them narrative that is not only disrespectful, but that also ignores the intersectionality between race and social justice issues. There were several other comments made throughout the night, which would be classified as microaggressions, that implied that the RSJ Office could not manage to address both racial and social justice issues, and the staff hired would not be capable. One comment went so far as to argue that the full proposal, which includes seven new positions, beyond my own and one repurposed position, does not offer anything new to address racial and social injustice. This begs another question. When the Office of Housing Stability Staffing was proposed, it was broadly recognized as a step forward, not a full solution. Why is a similar effort targeted at racism and social injustice criticized for starting out the same way? We cannot learn and move forward if we fail to address bias, no matter where it originates. We all suffer when any of us becomes complicit. I speak fully understanding there may be retribution. I do so knowing that some may attempt to deflect blame or exploit differences. But we must all understand that this too is a dominant culture tactic. Fear of retribution keeps voices silenced. Fear of retribution keeps voices silenced. Let us begin this work again. I remain fully committed to working with the council, the commission members, and the full community going forward. I call on the City Council members to acknowledge that these expressions and noted behaviors will do nothing but deepen divisions and sow mistrust and animosity. The RSJ Office has been proposed to be a bridge to unite and to heal injustices in all their forms, conscious and unconscious. I call on the City Council to voice their support for these goals and to show their support with their words and their actions. We are one city. We must all be committed to working as a united front to make sure that there is accountability, trust, and community building on all levels within the city, within the city government and the broader community. I thank you for your time this evening.
Thank you very much. Are there any comments from the council? Seeing none, this item will be laid on the table, placed on file. Thank you very much for coming.
Mr. President, we return to the regular order of business. We move to item number fourteen, which is unfinished business, is a request of the mayor requesting approval of amendments to the zoning ordinance, body art services, use standards, and table for permitted uses.
The planning board has still not taken this item up. Oh, Counselor Ballantyne, you have a comment?
Yes, Mr. President, I actually had it for Ms. Molina Capers. I just wanted to say thank you very much. Thank you for your comments, and I certainly look forward to reading them in more detail.
Thank you. So, item number fourteen, the planning board has not had a chance to take this item up yet, so this item will be laid on the table with no vote taken. Next item.
Mr. President, item number fifteen is a request, the mayor requesting approval to appropriate up to $153,000 from the Union Square Community Benefit Stabilization Fund to pay for the Somerville Cares Fund operating expenses and the community land trust startup costs.
There you go.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm just trying to pull up the information that Director Racanello sent earlier today about this item. This is, this is with regard to the funds for, for the community land trust. So I did not receive any information on this item. I believe it was the intention of Director Racanello to move this to committee, but I'm open to hearing differently from the director.
Through the chair, I'm sorry, having some meeting issues. This is Director Racanello. Counselor Scott's correct, this item could go to committee. Liaison Rio might actually have some more information. I know she's heavily involved in, in this. Happy to send it to committee if it warrants more discussion. It might be good to have interested parties be able to talk about it there.
Very good, this item referred to the Finance Committee, and Counselor, well, we're not taking a vote, so Counselor Ewan Kempin would like to note that he's recused. Counselor Scott, are there any items that we are going to approve, or can we send these all to Finance? Or there's only a few of them?
There are, there are three, but they're scattered all over the agenda. I'm trying to find agenda numbers for them right now.
Okay, let's read the next item.
Item number sixteen is a request of the mayor requesting the acceptance of a $100,000 grant with no new match required from the Mass Department of Transportation to the Mobility Division for improvements to Mystic Avenue and Shore Drive.
No new match.
Yeah, this one is one that we can, we can accept tonight, sir. I reviewed the information that's been provided, doesn't require matching funds, and gets directly to pedestrian improvements, so I guess that we approve it, see.
All right, Counselor Scott moves to approve. Do we need a roll call for this one, Mr. Clerk, or can we lay it on the table?
It can be laid on the table for approval.
Laid on the table for approval.
That brings us up to item number seventeen, which is a request to the, or communication from the city solicitor requesting approval to retain Greenberg Trarig as outside legal counsel in the matter of 191 Highland Avenue.
All right, I haven't heard anything about this, so let's refer it to Finance.
Very good, item eighteen is communication for the Director of Health and Human Services conveying the supervised consumption site penultimate report.
Right before this meeting, I had a great forum for the safe consumption sites. It was a good meeting, hope to hear more. Everyone, if you'd like to read this, a lot of good information. This item is laid on the table, placed on file.
Item number nineteen is a communication from the Director of Health and Human Services responding to an earlier council item regarding funding for drug treatment.
Just items laid on the table, placed on file, with copy sent to Public Health and Safety.
Item number twenty is an item of new business.
Mr. President.
Counselor White.
Thank you. I moved to waive the readings of items twenty-two, twenty through thirty, and ask that they all be approved this evening. I've consulted with the city clerk, and everything is in order.
All right, Counselor White moves to approve items twenty through thirty and waive the readings. Any discussion? Here are none, these items are laid on the table for approval.
That brings us, Mr. President, all the way up to item number thirty-one, which is a communication submitted by Senthil Kumar, who's proposing a zoning amendment to rezone his property at eight to eight A Melvin Street from Midrise Five to Neighborhood Residential.
All right, this item will refer to the Land Use Committee with a copy sent to Planning Board.
And thirty-two is a communication submitted by Dean Materazzo proposing a zoning amendment to rezone his property at thirteen Garfield Avenue from Fabrication to Urban Residential.
This item will be laid on the table, placed on file, with copy sent to Land Use.
Not placed on file, but referred for recommendation to the committees.
Your cheat sheet's wrong, John.
That's impossible, that's impossible, Mr. President.
Yeah, we're letting you go in a couple of months, John, I say.
That's right.
Repeat that again, I apologize.
Both items thirty-one and thirty-two are requests from, from property owners to rezone their properties. They, they should be referred to the Land Use Committee and to the Planning Board.
Yes, I did that for thirty-one and thirty-two, so thirty-three. Mr. President.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Counselor Ewan Kempin.
We can waive the readings of thirty-three, thirty-four, thirty-five, and thirty-six and refer them to Land Use with a copy to the Planning Board, please.
You're the best, Counselor Ewan Kempin. Any discussion? Seeing none, these items are referred to the Land Use Committee with a copy sent to the Planning Board.
Very good, that brings us all the way up to item number thirty-seven, which is a request of the mayor requesting approval of amendment to ordinances two dash three twenty-two and two dash three twenty-three to update categories and associated salaries for non-union positions.
This item will refer to the Finance Committee.
And item thirty-eight is a request of the mayor requesting the adoption of Mass General Law Chapter Forty, Section Thirteen D to establish a compensated absence liability fund.
This item will refer to the Finance Committee.
Item thirty-nine is a request, the mayor requesting approval to create a sewer capital stabilization fund.
Counselor Scott, we got items all the way to fifty-seven. Are we referring all these to committee?
We are referring items thirty-nine all the way to fifty-one. I recommend waiving the readings and sending those to committee, and then reading fifty-two.
All right, Counselor Scott moves to waive the readings out of thirty-nine to fifty-one. Refer them to Finance Committee, they are referred to the Finance Committee.
Very good, in that case, item number fifty-two is a request of the mayor requesting appropriation of $65,844 from the Salary Contingency Salaries Account to departmental non-union holiday accounts to pay staff for the Juneteenth holiday.
Counselor Scott.
Yeah, this is just putting some money into that salary, that salary account to pay our non-union employees for Juneteenth, which we now have as a city holiday.
Very good, do you know the union hires already getting this money?
You know, I do not know the answer to that question. I would certainly hope so, but I have not seen a similar appropriation for union employees.
Okay, Lauren, if you could let us know about that in the future. Definitely want to make sure everyone benefits from this, and I think it's a great thing that we're doing it. So Counselor Scott moves to approve. Any discussion? Let's do a roll call vote on this one.
Very good, this is a roll call vote on the appropriation of $65,000 plus to pay staff for the Juneteenth holiday. On that motion, Counselor Niedergang.
Yes.
Counselor White.
Yes.
Counselor Ballantyne.
Yes.
Counselor Ewan Kempin.
Yes.
Counselor Davis.
Yes.
Counselor Strezzo.
Yes.
Counselor Klingon.
Yes.
Counselor Mbah.
Yes.
Counselor Scott.
Yes.
Counselor Rosetti.
Yes.
And Counselor McLaughlin.
Yes.
Mr. President, with all eleven councils voted in favor, that item has been approved.
All right, next item.
Mr. President, I would move to waive the readings of items fifty-three through fifty-seven, and then, and send those to Finance Committee, and then read fifty-eight.
All right, Counselor Scott moves to waive the readings of fifty-three to fifty-seven. We're presenting to Finance Committee. Seeing no discussion, these items are referred to the Finance Committee.
That brings us up to item number fifty-eight, which is a request of the mayor requesting acceptance of a $36,000 grant with no new match required from the Department of Environmental Protection to the DPW for the recycling program.
Counselor Scott.
So this is just a grant that we received ongoing since 2012. There's no match required, and it does allow, basically for purchasing more recycling bins, education, hazardous waste programs, et cetera. So I'd ask that we approve this tonight.
All right, Counselor Scott moves to approve. Any discussion? Seeing none, this item is laid on the table for approval. Counselor Bow would, actually Counselor Bow is recused, so why don't we do a roll call vote on this, so he can recuse himself?
Very good, on the approval of item number fifty-eight, Counselor Niedergang.
Yes.
Counselor White.
Yes.
Counselor Ballantyne.
Yes.
Counselor Ewan Kempin.
Yes.
Counselor Davis.
Yes.
Counselor Strezzo.
Yes.
Counselor Klingon.
Yes.
Counselor Mbah. I record Counselor Mbah is recused. Counselor Scott.
Yes.
Counselor Rosetti.
Yes.
And Counselor McLaughlin.
Yes.
Mr. President, ten councils have voted in favor, one is recused. That item has been approved.
All right, next item.
That brings us all the way up to item number sixty-eight, which is a communication submitted by the Director of Infrastructure and Asset Management responding to a council item regarding the coordination with the EPA and NWRA on combined sewer overflows.
All right, this item is laid on the table, placed on file, with a copy sent to the Finance Committee.
And item sixty-nine is an application for a public event license for the Arts Council's Big Gay Dance Party in Union Square on June eleventh.
On the item. Counselor White moves to approve. Any discussion? Seeing none, this item is laid on the table for approval.
Mr. President, there is only one more item before the City Council this evening that came in late, and that's a communication submitted by Courtney O'Keefe, who has submitted comments with regard to the supervised consumption, consumption sites matter.
All right, this item is laid on the table and placed on file.
Mr. President, believe it or not, there are no further items before the council this evening.
Very good, no further business before us. Let's take all items laid on the table.
Hang on. Mr. President, there is a late item that's been submitted by the mayor's office. It's a communication submitted by the Police Department responding to some council requests, and that should be designated. If the council accepts it, that would be placed on file with a copy to the Finance Committee.
Okay. Seeing no discussion, this item is laid on the table, placed on file, with a copy sent to the Finance Committee.
Now there are no further items for the council.
All right, let's take all items.
Mr. President, Mr. President. Yeah, I, since it's going to the Finance Committee, and if it's from the Police Department, and we're having a meeting of the whole next week with that department, I have no idea what the communication is about, but could we also be sure that the full council receives a copy of that communication before Monday's meeting?
It should be out there after it's posted, yes. But Counselor, Mr. Clerk, can you forward that to everyone by email?
Certainly, that should already, would like that will already be in your inboxes.
Great, thank you.
Through the chair, I should be sending any, any moment now to the full council.
Thank you very much.
Let you know.
All right, can we now take everything off the table and move to approve?
Yes, we can, Mr. President.
Roll.
This is going to be a roll call vote on the approval of items three through seven, ten through thirteen, sixteen, twenty through thirty, and item sixty-nine, as well as placing on file items eighteen, nineteen, thirty-three, sixty-eight, and the three late items that were submitted by Director Capers, by Ms. O'Keefe, and by the police chief.
All right, please call the roll.
On that motion, Counselor Niedergang.
Yes.
Counselor White.
Yes.
Counselor Ballantyne.
Yes.
Counselor Ewan Kempin.
Yes.
Counselor Davis.
Yes.
Counselor Strezzo.
Yes.
Counselor Klingon.
Yes.
Counselor Mbah.
Yes, please.
Counselor Scott.
Yes.
Counselor Rosetti.
That was not me. Yes, yes.
And Counselor McLaughlin.
Yes.
Mr. President, all eleven councils have voted in favor of that motion. That motion has been approved.
All right, with no further business before us, Counselor Davis moves to adjourn. Please call the roll call adjournment.
On adjournment, Counselor Niedergang.
Yes.
Counselor White.
Yes.
Counselor Ballantyne.
Yes.
Counselor Ewan Kempin.
Yes.
Counselor Davis.
Yes.
Counselor Strezzo.
Yes.
Counselor Klingon.
Yes.
Counselor Mbah.
Yes.
Counselor Scott.
Yes.
Counselor Rosetti.
Yes.
And Counselor McLaughlin.
Yes.
Mr. President, all eleven councils have voted in favor of adjourning.
All right, ladies and gentlemen, we are adjourned. Good night.